The health and safety of our community and staff members are at the forefront of our minds as we continue to navigate county business in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. In accordance with the declaration of emergency announced on March 11th of 2020, and extended by the Board of County Commissioners on June 24th, 2021, today's meeting is being held virtually. To align with social distancing guidelines, some rules associated with Board of County Commissioner meetings will be temporarily altered. Please remember to mute your mic when you are not speaking, and when you're presenting, make sure to unmute your mic and check to see that your camera is on. May I have a motion on the consent calendar?
To move second.
Commissioner Vega Peterson moves. Commissioner Stegman seconds. Approval of the consent calendar. Marina, will you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Myron. Commissioner Myron, can you hear us? Well, continue to Commissioner Jai Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chere Kefory?
Aye. The consent calendar is approved.
Opportunity for public comment on non-agenda matters. This is a time for the Board to hear public testimony, not for Board deliberation. Uh, let's see, when I, um, when it is your turn to speak, I will call your name and unmute you. I will set a timer for three minutes when you begin speaking and announce when your time is up by saying time, at which point, please wrap up your sentence. When you are done with your sentence, I will place you back on mute. Madam Chair, we received one submission for public testimony, which was shared with Board members and staff. Um, today's testimony is from Ann Casper. And, uh, just one second, I'm gonna unmute you, Ann. Okay, you're unmuted. You're welcome to begin.
Thank you. Now, how do I get, can you see me?
So, we just have audio for public.
Oh, you do just have audio. You mean I fix up my hair for nothing? Okay, good. All right.
Sure looks beautiful. We envision you with, with beautiful hair, Ann.
Thank you, Deborah. It's a good hair day. Excuse me, Chere Kefory. Um, good, good morning, Chere Kefory and Commissioners. My name is Ann Casper, and I suffer from mental health systems. Um, I am here today to thank Beth Potite and the Health Division for their wonderful work during COVID. Um, they got so much information out during those emails. It was completely incredible, and I felt, um, it just was really a service to all of us. So, thanking Beth, and especially to those who are immigrants refugees, but us others too. By reading those emails, we knew what was going on and the incredible services. So, thank you. I'm also gonna mention other couple things. I happen to see that Julie Dodge is on today. And, um, in our Behavioral Health Advisory Committee, there's some hubbub going on. And I'd like to encourage, uh, Chere Kefory, you and, and Julie Dodge to contact Mandy Davis at the Trauma Informed Oregon, um, at Portland State University to get some ideas on how to approach this. I think she would have some good ideas. There's a lot of people in trauma, and, um, that I would just like to give that as a solution, as an idea to work on. Another thing I'd like to bring up today is the Portland Street Response. Um, it's really good news. They have finally hired a peer support specialist. But it's really interesting because they hired last year, you know, had a, um, a community health worker, and, um, they hired that community health worker at $50,000 to $90,000. And they've hired, um, the kid, the peer support specialist from $40,000 to $60,000. Um, and I don't, Chere Kefory can hear me? I'm not quite sure.
Yes, I can. Sorry.
Good. So, um, I'd like to ask you, because it's your colleagues over there on the other side of the river, um, if you can ask them for fair labor practices, because that one peer support specialist, one of them is working until 3:00 in the morning, and they get paid less than giving me hope for working during daytime hours. Um, community health workers actually get one hour of mental health training. And as you know, peer support specialists get over 40 to 80 hours. Um, and I actually spoke at the Community Health Worker State Conference this year because they're getting jobs working with people with mental health issues, and they're not quite sure how to work with us. So, let's all work together, um, and let's find out what is that big salary difference? Why are we earning up to $30,000 less just because we have lived experience? So, I, I thank you for thinking about this, and thank you very much.
Thank you for coming this morning, Ann. It's good to hear your voice.
And that is all the public testimony we have today. I will move on to R1. R1, Notice of Intent to Apply to the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge for $1.16 million over two years.
Summit.
Second.
Commissioner Stegman moves. Commissioner Jai Paul seconds. Approval of R1. Good morning, Abby Stamp.
Good morning, Chere Kefory. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you again. Abby Stamp, I use she/her/hers pronouns. I'm the Executive Director of the Multnomah County Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, here to present our notice of intent to apply to the MacArthur Foundation for $1.16 million over two calendar years, calendar year '22 and calendar year '23, to further our pre-trial reform work to enhance engagement with members of our community, and to continue to dive deep into racial and ethnic disparities across the criminal legal system continuum, and to partner with the community to improve those efforts. I did present on Tuesday, uh, for an hour with colleagues from across the spectrum, from the courts to the sheriff's office, to the district attorney and Department of Community Justice, to give a deep dive into the work to date and what we will be seeking moving forward into the next two years of the sustainability and step-down process of working off of the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge, which we have been lucky to be a partner of since 2015. Um, so this is my notice of intent. If there's any questions or comments about this application, I'm happy to.
Thanks, Abby. Uh, Commissioners, does anyone have questions or comments? We'll start with Commissioner Myron.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Jai Paul?
No questions. Thank you, Abby.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
No questions. Thank you.
And Commissioner Stegman?
Uh, no questions. Just a lot of gratitude to Abby and your team and all of the partners. I'm so excited that we're really working on evidence-based data and looking at, um, a, a risk assessment, and that it's, it's about time. So, really excited about the continued work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marina, will you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Jai Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chere Kefory?
Aye. The notice of intent is approved.
Thank you so much. Take care.
R2, Behavioral Health Resource Center Program Update.
Good morning. I'm gonna kick it off. Uh, you may remember that back in May, uh, this board voted to approve the Behavioral Health Resource Center FAC 1. And at that time, several Commissioners requested additional information about the BHRC's program design, and that's what today's panelists are here to share. Every day brings us closer to the opening of the BHRC, which will soon offer, uh, so many people, safety, healing, support, and a path forward. Much of that optimism and hope comes from the intentional work that the Office of Community Engagement has done to make sure that the right stakeholders, and especially people in the peer community, have a really active role in shaping what the BHRC services will look like. The Office of Consumer Engagement's efforts have been critical to keeping the county accountable to that principle of nothing about us without us. And I'm grateful for their work, as well as the passion that community members with lived experience and their advocates have shown for this project. Uh, I think that all speaks to how much the community wants and needs a place like the BHRC, and we're doing all that we can to deliver it just as quickly as possible. So, with that, I want to welcome our presenters this morning.
Thank you, Chere Kefory. Good morning, Chere Kefory and Commissioners. My name is Ebony Clark, um, and I am the Health Department Director. My pronouns are she/her/hers. Um, we are just grateful for the continued support in being able to continue to move this project forward, especially within the pandemic. Um, here this morning to present on, um, the Behavioral Health Resource Center is Julie Dodge, who is the Interim Behavioral Health Director. Um, we have Krista Jones, who is our Senior Manager for the Community Mental Health Program. Uh, we have Lynn Smith-Scott, who's a supervisor for the Office of Consumer Engagement. And then we have DeAndre Kenan-Julie, who is one of our coordinators within the Consumer, um, of, uh, the Consumer Engagement Office within the Behavioral Health Division. Uh, next slide, please. Just to do a quick level set, you know, we wanna, you know, start this conversation out with talking about the clear intersection, intersectionalities that we see specific to houselessness and, and behavioral health. Um, I think as we continue to reflect on the past year and a half in light of what we are seeing and experiencing within the COVID-19 pandemic, in addition to what we experienced with, um, this past year's ICE event, as well as the recent heat event, um, clearly, we can see the need for why we need a project like this online to, um, better meet the needs of our community. Um, with our priorities specific to, uh, leading with race and doing our work from a racial equity lens, um, this project dovetails nicely into our efforts around, uh, reducing, uh, the issues specific to justice, um, and the issues where we see individuals ending up incarcerated and/or ending up in, uh, high levels of care unnecessarily. We're excited because we do believe that this is an innovative solution, um, that's going to be accessible, uh, trauma-informed, and equitable to better meet the needs of those that we serve, uh, at the local level within the community. And so with that, I'd like to first hand it off to Lynn Smith-Scott, who's gonna talk a little about stakeholder engagement.
As the supervisor for the Office of Consumer Engagement, the Chere Kefory and Commissioners for the opportunity to share today. I look at the next slide, please. Chere Kefory, I want to thank you for giving the lead into peer engagement. Uh, that is the piece that makes this project unique, and it's been a real privilege to work with peers. We started in 2019 with February, and we've had 10 meetings so far with peers. They have given input into services, staffing, training, you only designed the facility, and DeAndre and Krista will talk more about that in just a minute. Also, in 2019, we met with businesses and neighborhood associations, recognizing that their perspective was vital to our planning and establishing collaboration and integration with our universities vital to them. Finally, in November of 2019, we met with behavioral health providers, and it was intentional that we met with peers before providers because we want people with lived experience to guide the services that we have onsite at the center. So, people with a variety of service focus will be onsite, including behavioral health treatment, uh, everything from wound care and housing to employment and benefits. We're grateful for the opportunity to work with the community in an innovative way. Starting this year, DeAndre worked with consumers who are currently receiving services in shelters. We recognized that with the impact of COVID, the needs today are different than they were in 2019 when we first began leading with peers. So, I want to thank DeAndre for his work with, for consumers and all the consumers who helped us with their feedback. More recently, in February this year, we met with first responders that included law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services, and crisis services. That impact was vital because we will need to collaborate and have their pathways to emergency services. I believe that over time, as we develop relationships with the people we serve, we can reduce the reliance on law enforcement. We know that for some people, experiencing trauma as their first responders is extremely difficult, and we wanted to be able to establish different relationships and provide services in different ways. We look forward to working with them. And lastly, most recently, we've worked with culturally-specific providers. We want our culturally-specific providers to be more than just a referral source. We use their input, which is more valuable than I can measure, to guide us in integrating culturally-responsive principles throughout the program. Thank you for that, and with that, I'll pass it to the next slide, and DeAndre.
Hey Chair, uh, hey Commissioners, thank you for having us. I'm DeAndre Kenan-Julie. I'm one of the Office of Consumer Engagement coordinators. And, uh, first, I want to thank, uh, Ebony for bringing me in on this process in the very beginning, uh, and also my whole team for supporting me through this process. Um, at the top of this slide, this is a quote that I had said in our first peer stakeholders meeting. As you guys well know, I'm a person with lived experience, and it wasn't but seven years ago where I was navigating services like this, and there was nothing like this that we're trying to create with BHRC. And, uh, you know, I think we live up to what, what I said here around being really intentional around this work. And, um, this is the first time I've got to bring my whole self into a project, so I just want to say thank you to that. Um, yeah, and we've got the lead with, um, with lived experience. I've been able to reach out to, uh, our community providers, uh, our consumers, and gather everyone together who are working directly with the population we intend to engage. Uh, and like Lynn said, we've had, uh, 10 peer stakeholder meetings, and they've been able to really guide our values in this process. And a lot of the processes and other programs, peers and consumers are an afterthought. So, from the very beginning, we've been able to really just be equitable around engagement. And the peers have been able to guide us on, uh, hiring process, uh, safety and security measures, uh, trauma-informed design, uh, leading with like a racial equity lens. Um, and, and the good thing about BHRC, I think that separates, um, from any other program is we're bringing the services to the people, not the other way around. And we're also being very aware of, uh, the traumas with our consumers in our current system and building, um, security and safety measures around that. And then also, another big piece is we're trying to just facilitate people building community. Next slide, please.
Hi, everybody. Um, my name is Krista Jones. I'm the Senior Manager for the Community Mental Health Program. I am filled with immense honor and gratitude for our team, our partners, and our stakeholders, and I'm very happy to be here today. Um, I'm gonna talk about just the endpoint on the previous slide, but, um, our commitment to trauma-informed design was really an integral part of this process, and we started that, um, process by acknowledging the prevalence of trauma. Recent studies show that 70% of adults have experienced at least one traumatic event in their lives. And with the community that the Behavioral Health Resource Center aims to support, that number is likely higher due to the experience of chronic houselessness and behavioral health challenges. And this is particularly true with regard to trauma due to racism, violence, abuse, and grief and loss. We are mindful that trauma experiences often start in childhood and impact development and how the body, spirit, and mind experience the world. Trauma has an impact on the experience of safety, so we took great efforts in planning by asking, what will help participants feel safer in the Behavioral Health Resource Center? How can we reduce the threat of danger that activates a trauma response? Asking these questions led us to take a deeper focus on materials, color, lighting, texture, signage and communication, space layout, and of course, on program design and staffing. And we were really mindful to include natural light, access to outdoor spaces, and to include art to increase comfort. Now focusing on the planning process, um, the planning process has been incredibly rich and included a lot of collaborations and information sharing to develop, um, a facility that provides low-barrier supports. In 2018, we built a team with the sole goal of envisioning what is, what the space needed to be in order to accommodate both the programs and the unique needs of the participants. And as mentioned, we also quickly activated stakeholder engagement to be able to get that very valuable perspective to help us design the space and programs. In August of 2019, we started our tours. Um, these were local and regional tours that we took, including a couple of facilities in Washington, where we got to do a, a road trip together, which was really great. Um, we were leaning into the experiences and expertise of the agencies and individuals who've been doing this work for a really long time. We learned a lot from those tours, and of course, we met amazing people, participants, and providers alike that really helped us understand the challenges, the strengths, and the possibilities. Some of these included how people might flow through the space and through the facility, how we can impact policies and procedures to make them clear, inclusive, and to help maintain safer spaces, and also how to develop staffing patterns and staffing resources that are trauma-informed. More specifically, we learned that there can never be enough storage for the belongings and supplies that are needed, that green spaces are vital to have access to nature for participants and for pets, and that allowing pets into these spaces reduces barriers to folks who rely on their support. In June of 2020, we really had to start looking at COVID, um, our response to COVID in terms of the BHRC. This led to the development of a phased implementation plan, which I'm gonna speak more to in just a few minutes. In 2021, the most recent planning, um, activity that we had was the procurement build process, where we have outlined, um, the services and needs, and we are setting the groundwork for the eventual identification of the providers who are going to be providing the onsite staff, which will be predominantly peers and other behavioral health professionals. And now I want to pass it over to DeAndre to talk about the day center.
Next slide. Yeah, and this is the highlight of our program, and, and if you guys would like to join me, I'd like to take you on a journey really quick, and, and I want to really just set the tone and put you guys in the mind, uh, in the embody, embodiment of a lot of people and consumers. And just imagine that you're an individual who has walked through many systems and been traumatized, and been told that this is what you need, and there's something wrong with you, and you've been never treated like a human being, and you finally walk into a space, and you find people who are just like you, that are not above you, but working for you. Uh, and, and that's the environment we intend to, um, create at BHRC. Um, all of our peers, all of our staff will be peers. It will be, um, peer-led clinically-supported, which is not predominantly what happens. Um, and if people just want to come get a break, a fresh air, just to sit down and relax, and they're not being told what to do, we also want to create that environment. And, and if they want to get further help and other services, we have our community partners that will be present in our buildings, and we'll be able to connect them to other services. Uh, we want it to be a calm, warming, safe environment. And, you know, one of the big things that, um, the stakeholders came up with was we were talking about safety and how we don't get to define safety. So, our goal is to create a safer environment, because some people have never felt safe in their lives. Um, so we have services from, um, art, recovery services, mental health services, other providers. Uh, and if they just want to come in to charge their cell phones, get on computers, take a shower, brush their teeth, like that's available. And, and the whole idea is that people can call this place their own. Next slide.
Thank you, DeAndre. And so I'm gonna, um, walk us through the, the shelter for, for a minute. Um, through our work with our partners at the Joint Office of Homeless Services, uh, through our tours, our partnership with stakeholders, and through our own experience of working with the community of individuals experiencing houselessness and behavioral health challenges, we know that individuals that we will serve experience challenges and barriers to staying in other shelters in our system. Their needs sometimes go beyond what shelter staff and programs can safely manage. The Behavioral Health Resource Center Shelter will provide a space for those experiencing houselessness and behavioral health concerns can sleep, can take a shower, do their laundry, and they can be supported through an immediate challenge by trained and helpful staff in an environment that is calming and empowering and designed to address their unique needs. The shelter will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with a length of stay of up to 30 days. And we are again applying a trauma-informed approach to this coed design through staffing, equipment, and furniture placement to ensure that participants are safe from harm and re-traumatization. All the services that are provided in the day center, including the resources and social connection, will be available to shelter participants as well. And staff will be trained on trauma-informed and culturally-responsive care, and staffing will promote collaboration and transparency so that trust and safety can be built. And of course, pets are welcome in the shelter. And next slide, please. Thank you. The Bridge Housing Program is designed to provide a place for participants to sleep, eat, learn, and to connect, um, and use their time to work with staff and providers to obtain permanent and stable housing when they leave the program. They will have access to skill-building activities, support, and, um, highly-trained staff, including peers and clinicians, to support recovery and healing. While living in the Bridge Housing Program, participants will be able to connect with providers onsite and to use other day center resources similar to the shelter. And while learning new skills and working with staff to identify and obtain housing, participants can build community, have a safe and consistent place to sleep, eat, and get other basic needs met. Next slide, please. Thank you. The implementation plan for the Behavioral Health Resource Center includes the procurement process, as I mentioned, where we are identifying contracted providers, um, to staff the facility, and this procurement, um, will be open in the fall of this year. Being mindful of the impact of COVID and the workforce shortage, we are applying a trauma-informed strategy to develop a phased opening to ensure that participants and staff are safe and have adequate resources, or are safer, rather. The plan includes opening the day center first in the fall of 2022, followed by the shelter and then the Bridge Housing Program, with time in between to learn, to adapt, and to respond. We have embedded a lot of time for staff orientation and training on trauma-informed practices, on best practices, and on inclusive programming before the center even opens. And leading up to the center and beyond, um, staff will be doing community outreach to increase, um, awareness and understanding of how to refer to the BHRC and when it is appropriate to do so. And we will be convening an advisory group to support continuous quality improvement and to ensure that, that participants and staffs and providers, uh, voices are raised throughout, um, the, the life of the BHRC. And then finally, through the implementation of the BHRC, we're gonna create opportunities to learn and to better understand how to grow facilities and expand across the county to increase accessibility to these much-needed resources and programs. I'm gonna pass it over to Julie now. Thank you.
Morning. I'm Julie Dodge, Interim Director of Behavioral Health for Multnomah County, and I use she/her pronouns. And again, I want to thank the Chair and all the Commissioners for your support and as well as your interest. We're super excited about this. But here's the big question. What good will it do? And that's what we really want to think about when we're thinking about, how do we measure outcomes? It's about more than numbers. It is about, does this make a difference in the lives of the people that we are serving? And how will we know that? Do we do that because the research says X, Y, and Z will lead to better outcomes? Or because the people we serve, the consumers and the peers, say, this is what matters to us? And that's how we plan to approach gathering outcomes, to lead with race and equity, to say, all right, how does this impact people in terms of their backgrounds, their experience in life? How they identify racially? How does this, this impact people in terms of the trauma that they've experienced? And whether or not this space is truly the space that DeAndre, DeAndre described earlier? Is it that place where they know, ah, here, I'm safe? And how does that make a difference in their lives? Does that lead to better outcomes? Um, we of course want to track the numbers, but we want to be able to say that if you're gonna make this huge investment, you being Commissioners and, and supporting us in terms of the budget, how will you know that this was a wise investment? And to that end, and, to that end, we also intend to be able to partner with an evaluation partner to say, it's not just us who's saying this, but we're able to demonstrate this and perhaps become a model for others, that this makes a difference, and that we're able to say that people are able to move through this space and have better outcomes in their lives, whether it is they only come to the day center, or they come from the day, to the day center and move up to the shelter or the bridge to housing, or, and into a more stable space in their lives. And that's our hope. Our hope is that they will find what is meaningful to them that makes a difference. Next slide, please. The Behavioral Health Resource Center is intended to be embedded within the whole continuum of care. At the center, we see the person who is houseless or the person who is living with a variety of behavioral health concerns, whether it's mental health or substance use, or things unspoken and unnamed, that they are able to come and feel welcome and be surrounded and have access to the full continuum. And that, uh, that ring around us is all those services that we already could, that we're built in to connect with. Um, or from crisis to treatment, to job access, to housing, to basic needs access, that we will be a conduit and a connector that surrounds people as they want to enter into those spaces. And then on the outside, you see some of these new things, those blue bubbles on the outside, those new things that are coming into our system, from the Behavioral Health Emergency Coordinating Network, which has been quite a buzz in a lot of spaces, to partnering with our culturally-specific services and talking about how we can assure that our culturally-specific providers have space and access onsite on a regular basis to the implementation of 988, and how that will increase access. Um, all of these things are part of what we are working to connect to. We're part of the continuum. We're not a single answer. We think we're gonna be, be able to offer a very important next step. We think we're going to be able to offer a very important next step. You know, if I'm coming in in crisis and I'm no longer in crisis, what now? What is the next step? And we believe the Behavioral Health Resource Center will be a key part of that in offering that space where I can begin to get things together, where I can develop that welcomed experience and begin to build trust to be able to access those other things that if I choose, I can go there too. Next slide, please. Ebony.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me okay? So with that, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity and take any questions that you may have at this point in time.
Thank you, team. I'm sure inspired after that. That was wonderful. We will have commissioners ask their questions or engage in some conversation. And we'll start this time with Commissioner Steckman.
Thank you, Chair. Wow, a really uplifting presentation. I'm so excited about the work that you all are doing. So thank you, Ebony, Lynn, Krista, Deandre, and Julie. Deandre, I love what you said about bringing your whole self to a job. And often we know that that's not a luxury that a lot of folks have. And to hear you all talk about, you know, this being a peer-led clinically-supported versus the opposite of that is really, really refreshing. So, you know, thank you for, I think you said there were like 10 peer stakeholder meetings. And oftentimes, government, and rightfully so, gets criticized for not doing their outreach. And you all have just done a tremendous job in making sure that that was a huge priority. I did have a couple of questions about the shelter beds. So there's 42 shelter beds for one to 30 days and then 20 beds for the Bridge Housing. And I'm just wondering if you could talk about the delta of the 22 beds. Like where do those people go? You know, how do they get sorted and where might they go along that journey?
Can I take this one? Thank you so much, Commissioner Steckman, for that wonderful question. And I want to make sure that I'm hearing it correctly, that we want to understand the transition from potentially the shelter beds to the bridge to housing and then maybe what happens after that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So from the shelter, our thoughts are that individuals who are participating in the day center will be, a lot of activity, a lot of communication will happen from the staff and the participants. And so those individuals who will be identified who will benefit from the shelter beds and also other shelters within our system that may not be able to assist those participants in the best way will also make the referrals into the shelter program. And so individuals who are in the shelter are going to have a lot of access to resources and supports and a lot of attention from the staff who are also working on that floor and in that program. Individuals from that shelter and additionally individuals from other reference will be identified for the Bridge to Housing Program. The individuals who are going to be eligible and who will likely be most successful in that program are individuals who are able and willing to participate really actively in meeting with providers and really understanding the resources and and being able to adapt to the resources that are provided to them. Because with that hope and expectation that when they are nearing graduation of that program, that they are entering into stable housing through the various wraparound supports that will be provided to them. So I think the way that we envision it is that as you move kind of throughout the facility, the supports become more intense and require a little bit more from the participant to ensure that we have that successful match to housing upon graduation. Does that help?
That does help.
I just want to add also that the perfectly well said, Krista. But I will also add that participants who have the opportunity to utilize one of the Bridge Housing Beds will be able to observe and to also assess what the needs are. Because we anticipate that there'll be individuals that might not be able to go on to kind of independent living type, you know, housing and actually may be better served in a more residential-based program versus permanent-supported housing. So that's just another small caveat.
Thank you, Ebony. Along the same lines, we all know that especially in downtown Portland, there is a large houseless population. Will priority be given to any of those particular areas where we know that there is so much need? Or can you just talk about like the referral system of how people will get referred in?
I will take that one as well. We are very much aware of the situation that is happening right now in downtown. And that is why we have focused on that early engagement. So before doors open, we have a outreach campaign that we are developing so that we can help businesses and neighbors and partners really understand how to access the resource once it does open. We have visions of businesses and neighbors, you know, guiding folks over to the Behavioral Health Resource Center as an opportunity to engage in a helpful and meaningful way. And so individuals will kind of be routed, referred by neighbors, by businesses into the shelter and also additionally from other shelters and other providers who are working with individuals who are houseless and who have these behavioral health specific, unique needs. So we do see access to the day center itself will be by self-referral. Anyone can use that space. And we really want to make it open. That's our value of being inclusive. We want folks to be able to get coffee, get tea, charge their phone, or you know, rest and talk with others and use our outdoor space as well. And then once they're identified as being eligible or in need of the shelter bed, that's when the conversation will start with the participant to ensure that that's also what they want. And that, and then as we move up into the floor again, more assessment, more talking with them to understand their eligibility, willingness and ability to engage in the Bridge to Housing Program.
And then what I would just add is that, you know, as we continue along with the project, you know, we're continuing to flesh out what the inclusion policy will be. Key word, we're not using exclusion, but what the inclusion policy will be. Because again, we really want to work from an equity lens. And again, we anticipate that even there'll be individuals who might need a different support, maybe not even being able to utilize the day center. But if we find that there's an individual that they might need something different, you know, we will have, there will be staff that have a responsibility and can assure that then that individual can get triaged and referred to whatever that right support is if it's not the actual resource center.
That's just to chime in, sorry, Commissioner. I also want to acknowledge the Chair's staff, who has also been having some conversations with Downtown Portland Business Association around how they can partner with us and some of that outreach. And so I think that relationship building will be useful and also garner support from the businesses. So we're very optimistic about that.
Well, that's incredible. I mean, we all know that there is such tremendous need in that area. And this is such a huge opportunity for us to address that problem. So yeah, so much gratitude to all of you. And then the last question I had is that are we like, like I don't see other resource centers like this. I mean, are we the first or, you know, where are we at? You know, so this is really kind of groundbreaking, I'm guessing. Is that correct?
I would like to think so.
I mean, I will say Krista referenced it earlier, you know, there are similar, you know, projects in King County, but we are the first locally to do something within our region.
And I think it does create a real opportunity to document what we are doing and to, you know, share that to potentially be an example for other communities as well.
And we know that this program is unique in that it is because you can't just take a program in another community and dump it into yours. And I think that what you've heard today is that the real intentional efforts to not just include peer voices, but to be the program to be led by peer voices and people with lived experience, really, I do believe is groundbreaking and hopefully serves as a model for the way that we will do things in the future.
Awesome. Well, thank you all. I mean, having a person-centered approach to behavioral health, like that's what we need to do and you all are doing it, you know, Chair and your team and all of the people, like we see, you know, the five presenters, but we know that there are hundreds of people, partners, community health workers, peer specialists that will make this program so successful. So much gratitude for you, to you all. Thank you for being here.
Commissioner Peggy Peterson.
Thank you, Chair. So I mean, just first of all, thank you, Ebony and Deandre and Krista and Derek and Julie and Lynn for and the rest of the folks who have been working on this. I know this has been a huge effort from our facilities folks too, for just getting this project going and doing it in a way that is so thoughtful and inclusive of community in, you know, in recognizing that this is a special opportunity to create a place, to create a community center, to create a home for folks. And I think that the work that's gone into making sure that it's going to be a place that fulfills the hopes that everybody has for it and making sure that people feel welcome has just been incredible. So I just appreciate all that. I also really appreciate the fact that as you're opening it up, you're being very thoughtful about what that looks like. And it's not going to be, you know, everything's going to happen at once. It's going to be a big overwhelming thing. You're looking at, you know, opening the day center, you know, next fall and then going from there, which I think is really smart so that we can build it and make sure again, as everything opens, it's as successful as possible. I am curious, you know, in terms of just the vamp, the rolled-out opening, you know, what are some of the things that you're going to be looking at and, you know, as a, you know, as like a gate to the next, to opening the next level? Have you thought about that yet? I know that some of the, you know, kind of measurements and outcomes you want to develop with community and have that as part of the process too. And I'm just wondering if you have, you know, if you know what the opening, you know, plan will look like or you're still working on that.
I can get started. I think it's an excellent question and we are still in development of that, the details of that plan. And I think that part of that is that openness and flexibility to learn and to absorb information as we are seeing it. And so the day center is going to be really important element for us to really be mindful of and make sure that we're gathering the right data. And by gathering the right data, that means talking to participants and to staff and to really understanding what their experience is, to understand what access is like for the services and supports, to understand what provider access is like to the facility in order to make those connections with with participants and to really understand kind of the impact that it's having on the surrounding area. We also want to be mindful of COVID. New information is coming in all the time. And of course, all of our hope is that we won't be talking about COVID nearly as often by then. But we still have to be mindful of those impacts and be able to adapt to that and respond to that. So I think it's about information gathering. It's about being aware and mindful of what the experience is. And then making sure that our values and the elements of being safer of trauma-informed practices are really being applied well before we move to the next phase.
Just chasing the COVID comments. You know, again, we hope that in a year we'll be in a different space with COVID. But depending on what is happening with the pandemic, you know, we have an up to 42-bed capacity in the shelter floor, for example, but we may need to reduce that to increase space in between people and make sure that there's that appropriate safe zone likewise in the Bridge to Housing. So, you know, we are, that's probably why we developed the world. The staggered implementation is because we're living in a world that is shifting, as you all know, week to week, month to month. So that will also inform some of that process.
And if I could add just one more thing, we're looking critically at workforce development. We find that that is an increasing issue. We want to make sure we have the right people trained the right way. Workforce development is an important part of it.
Great. Thank you guys for those answers. And everything sounds like exactly, exactly right on that. Julie, I just also wanted to just comment on your TARDIS bookshelf in your background. That is incredible. And we are watching, my family's like watching Dr. Who together right now. And so I noticed that. It is fantastic. So that was my final comment. But I just appreciate all the work from this. The fact that we are, we are getting so close to opening these doors and having this as a resource for our community, especially the downtown community, which has needed something like this for so long, is fantastic. And just appreciate you guys and all of the work. Thank you.
Commissioner Jappel.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, everybody. This was just an awesome way to start my day. So excited to hear about the plans and to see them, see them move to the stage. And really, I know that July of 22 will be upon us before we know it, but it feels like a long time away and can't wait. There is so much to appreciate. Deandre, I want to particularly appreciate your introduction and your comments. Were really moving. I, you know, hearing that how you experienced the process of creating this center, I think tells us a lot about how it's going to, how it's going to operate and how it's going to work for the people that we want to serve. So thank you for sharing that. Really appreciate, I mean, you know, it's been said before, but the focus on on peers as leading and not supporting and, you know, shifting that paradigm. I was fascinated by the details of the trauma-informed design and to hear very concretely how space affects people and affects the services that we want to provide. Not a lot of questions. I think my colleagues have asked most of them. One question about capacity, so thinking specifically about the day shelter. There is such a need for these services. I'm curious about, you know, whether you feel that we have, I don't know that we can ever have sufficient capacity, but whether there's been a need to think about inclusion from that perspective, as in, you know, any, any concerns about having to not being able to include everybody who shows up at the door? Or what do you think the capacity is going to be? I guess we could, we could tackle that question in a couple of different ways.
I'll start with that and then Krista, Deandre, or Lynn, if you want to chime in. I mean, we'd love to be at full capacity. But, you know, we also know that it will take time for many people who are, have consistently been living outside to feel like this is even a safe place to approach. We don't anticipate that the day we open, we're going to have 150 people waiting in line to come indoors. It's not like, you know, you know, Black Friday sale. We think that they will trickle in and that as work goes out, more people will come. At the same time, we're also hoping that as people feel safe and they're able to move up through the process, that some of those people will gain connections to other spaces where they won't need the day center anymore. So our hope is that it won't be the same 150 people in three people, in three years, but that those folks will have found other spaces and we will be serving new people. You know, and our, you know, in a perfect world, that number would be continuously decreasing because we don't have people living outside anymore. I don't realistically anticipate that, but I, at this point, I think I don't, I'm not concerned about being overwhelmed, though it would be a lovely outcome. Go from, if others want to chime in.
I think there's two things I want to address with this. Deandre, go ahead if you were going to say something.
Just really quick, and my hope is that we're able to be groundbreaking with this and this will be replicated throughout the community. And that not only people hear about it, but other community partners and organizations hear about it. And it just helps bridge the gap to where we're all connecting with services. So I think that'll be a way to keep us at a good capacity.
Something comes to mind for me about that trust building. It's going to be so important that we are kind of patient with the process and that we are focused on staff training and on building communities so that folks do feel safe coming into this space and that they learn to start trusting the space and that it is consistent and reliable and provides them what we say it's going to provide to these individuals. The other piece to this is that because it's peer-driven, it's also community-driven. It's going to be really important that the participants are able to actively participate in policy, in procedure, and how, and how staff move about the facility and how staff respond to the needs of the participants. So that is definitely a value that we're going into this. That's a value that we're going into with the procurement process. It's going to be a value that we're going into with our outreach, with our assistance and technical support with staffing. And it's all about really making sure that this facility is a safer and welcoming space for everyone. And it's all about really making sure that this facility is a safer and, and welcoming space for everyone and that everyone has a voice within that facility.
Thank you all for those, for those responses. And, you know, they just continue to echo the thoughtfulness behind this entire project. So really, really appreciate that. I think the only other question I had is sort of ancillary. So I can, I can take it offline if one of you just want to call me back or set up additional time. And that is someone mentioned the Behavioral Health Emergency Coordination Network. And I haven't heard that term before and I'm curious about what that is. So if there's a quick answer, or later, or later.
I think that'd be a great conversation later on and I'd be happy to follow up with you on that.
Perfect. Thank you, Julie. And thank you again, everybody. Really, really great work.
Commissioner Myron.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you all so much. I mean, so much has been said. I have a couple of questions and wanted to just add some comments. And, you know, going back to just beginning at the county and the work of the, you know, to do the deep systems analysis of how mental health services are both provided at the county and how they are perceived and experienced by people needing those services. That, that analysis provided a number of findings and recommendations. And one of the recommendations was to elevate the role of someone with lived experience at the county in an administrative supervisory director, however you want to describe that, in that position. And I just have to say, Lynn, we are so fortunate, A, that the county pursued the position in the first place and followed that recommendation. But B, that Lynn, you are in that role. You have been just such a phenomenal leader. And, and in particular, Deandre, you have been leading so significantly. I mean, on so many levels, but it's apparent here in this project. And I just am so grateful to both of you. The analysis, you know, also sort of pointed out needs for some essential pieces of the puzzle that are missing in our continuum. And right now they're, you know, there's not really a place, I mean, there isn't a place for people to go if they're experiencing mental health, behavioral health issues, that they just need somewhere to be. And I vividly recall going to, you know, North Star has what's called a living room model where people can drop in and have some respite and get a meal and then get connected to employment services. It's, it's a much smaller scale than this and a much sort of, it's a unique approach. But I remember visiting there and talking to a gentleman who was so grateful for that type of approach. And he said, you know, he said, I, I do go to my therapy and that really helps or my group or whatever. It's like, that's two hours of my entire week when I'm otherwise sitting alone and don't have anywhere else to be. Like, what do I do? And here we have the answer for so many people, I think, who are in that position. And it's really, really wonderful. And so I, you know, I've been advocating for this kind of a center for a long time and I just so deeply appreciate Chair Kefory, your leadership in making this a reality and the opportunity to be a part of the process. So thank you. And then, you know, Julie, Lynn, Deandre, Kristin, of course Ebony, you know, this is a great presentation, which is emblematic of just the, the really awesome work you've done as part of this process. And all my colleagues have talked about the peer engagement aspect of this and how from the beginning, like the very beginning, like when it was the kernel of an idea, started to engage consumers and peers in this process, engaging in design. And I love how you talked about sort of like the need for green space and storage and pets. Makes so much sense. The reference to the workforce development, which is such an integral piece to our entire, you know, continuum of services that we provide and, and the idea that this can help decrease reliance on law enforcement as we are addressing some of the really major issues that we're seeing escalating on our streets. So those are my comments. Just bravo, amazing, kudos and appreciate all of you. In terms of a couple of questions, you know, I, there was a mention of maximum capacity or maximum time spent in shelter and in the bridge housing. If people get to their maximum times, where, where will they go? And this might be just part of the evolution of how we're thinking about this. But what, what is our thinking right now?
I will take a start at this. And thank you so much, Commissioner Myron. Excellent questions. And I think it's something that we, this is a wonderful place to apply our values. Our values are for inclusivity. Our values are for trauma-informed care and culturally responsive care. And so when we are approaching that 30-day, we want to be working with the individual to identify what is their need right now? Do they need to potentially come back into the process? Do they need a different level of support? We want to make sure that we're also aligning our, what, aligning our program with rules and regulations and not violating housing and all the rules around sheltering and that sort of thing. But we want to make sure that our values are maintained in this process. And so with trauma-informed, you have to be flexible. You have to be communicative and have those lines of communication always open, both with the participant, with other providers and with the system as a whole, so that together we can work toward helping this person to really impact what they need in that immediate moment. I know that's not as solid maybe as you're hoping for, but I think it's a, we have to be flexible and we have to, we have to grow as we go.
Thank you. That is, I will accept that answer absolutely. So thank you. You know, one, one element of this, and I think Commissioner Jappal referred to it. I was glad to hear Julie's response, but I really appreciated that slide on the continuum because the continuum is key. And there are three elements of that continuum that are so essential. None of them is sufficient alone, but I believe that three of those can be real game changers in addition to the Behavioral Health Resource Center. The first is Beacon Behavioral Health Emergency Coordination Network, which is huge and has the potential to serve as such a complement to this work and is another necessary, but not sufficient element of this continuum. So I look forward to the ongoing engagement of the board in that work. I'm on the governance board with that project and it's really exciting with, with the leaders, some of the leaders on this, on this panel. I also want to elevate, you know, Portland Street response and that this is such an important component of whatever our non-law enforcement response to people with behavioral health issues on our streets is. And, and then the supportive housing services measure and how we get people in need of, you know, deeply affordable housing with profound wraparound supportive services into that housing. And this can be such a benefit for that. So I, I really look forward to delving deeper with all of you into that continuum question because that is key to making our systems function effectively. And one, just going back to the day center and sort of capacity there, I was going to ask that question as well, you know, and I appreciated Julie, your answer and like, I look forward to that day when, you know, lined up to get in there. I, you know, a sort of a piece of that, I imagine, and I know there's going to be a tension around ensuring that there is a safe and trauma-informed space for people to be who are maybe in crisis. And then also being welcoming to everyone, including people who may, by virtue of their crises, be agitated or be disruptive, et cetera. And so I'm, I'm just curious, you know, about, I don't know if it's an answerable question, but how are, are we taking that into account as we're considering this broader way that we're providing support for people?
Anybody else wants to jump in? Please just hand.
I'll start and maybe pass it to Krista. I mean, that continuum, as you're referring to, Commissioner, is a big part of that access. You know, people will have ups and downs, but not necessarily enter into true crisis. And so which is why we want to make sure our peers on site are really prepared and able to step into that space and to offer someone support. We're also building in some quiet spaces where people can safe, safely be. But if someone is truly having a mental health emergency, they're imminently at risk of harm to themselves or someone else, then we will partner with those other pieces of our continuum, which right now is Unity or it could be others. But, you know, with Behavioral Health Emergency Coordinating Network, one of their hopes is potentially to have a crisis stabilization center for, that would be, you know, for those folks who, you know, maybe they don't need to enter the hospital, but they need more support than what we might be doing at the Behavioral Health Resource Center. So it's, it's really about building out the continuum. The reality is Beacon is not open, is not running. That's a ways down the road, but we're not opening for, you know, a little, around a year anyway. So, but I think that a lot of that built on making sure our staff are well-prepared. We have the design in space for folks and also connected well with our partners who are very good in the more emergent state time. And then Krista, if you want to, welcome to.
Just wanted to kind of highlight the spacing and how we have really applied a trauma-informed design into looking at where do folks need to go when they are experiencing a behavioral health challenge in the moment that might feel disruptive to others, but really it's about the person and it's about what they need in that moment. And so not only is it a compassionate space, so we're going to have rooms that are separate for individuals to go in to, you know, just be able to rest and to, and to feel calm. We have an outdoor space that's also a little bit smaller so that folks can have a little bit of isolation if that's what they need. And then we have this larger plaza space, which, you know, connects folks to nature, but allows a lot of flexibility so that participants can choose how they move around the space. I think another element to this is that our staff, the staff that are going to be in the, in the facility, those that lived experience peers, are going to be trained to be very alert to the needs of the participants, to be able to anticipate and to get to know people so that they can understand, okay, someone's coming in today that might, that might feel challenged by this activity that's going on over there in that corner. So how might I redirect them to a quieter space? I think that applying trauma-informed and compassionate practices, that is what is going to be a standout of this facility and it's so exciting.
Yeah, I was gonna just piggyback off that. I think the, the big pieces around hiring and who we have here and that people are really passionate around the work they do and it's not just for a paycheck. And also with our local touring and out-of-state touring, like we got to really be equitable around our exclusionary processes. And we're going to really look at where people are coming from and where they're at and do a case-by-case assessment around like what makes it, what qualifies for exclusion and really taking a deeper look at it. Now like regular places where there's a confrontation and you have to go and you can't come back. We definitely talked about that around understanding the acuity of people's mental illness and creating community where the peers that are working there know the people on a person-to-person level and can de-escalate that.
I love that. I love all aspects of that answer. And, and that had tied into my last question, which I mean, I guess it was around challenges about staff retention and looking at like in Vancouver, the navigation center, you know, recently closed in part due to staffing challenges. And, and so my question, but I think you've answered it, was about how we anticipate making the Behavioral Health Resource Center a rewarding supportive workplace with just compensation, where people just really want to work. I mean, I think you've all answered it, like, I want to work there. It just sounds like an amazing place. And so, you know, I don't know if you have anything to add to that or not, but.
I'll jump in simply, you know, acknowledging that not just all over the country and specifically in Oregon, there is a workforce shortage in behavioral health and it is about just compensation. It's also about how do we provide the encouragement, support and supervision for the people who are working there? That peers not only get supervision, but that they get time away to tend to their own things. Because, you know, when you're walking and living in the middle of this, that can escalate and trigger us as well. So we want to be trauma-informed in our staff support, in our policies. So it's not just, oh, those are the clients and we, you know, just kind of suck it up. That's not it at all. It is creating a space where we're also supporting our staff members beyond compensation, but with compensation as well, so that the workspace itself is welcoming, inclusive and supportive.
And I would just add that, you know, a majority of the Behavioral Health Resource Center is going to be staffed by contracted providers. And so with that, you know, we have the obligation and duty and are committed to continuing to, you know, carry forward, you know, the integration of our values and, and expectations. And then working to, you know, leverage our role in assuring that it can be, that they can be a competitive employer. But, you know, again, we're super hopeful and this is an opportunity to, you know, where folks with lived experiences and peers, those who've been certified as peer support specialists, have an opportunity to drop their name in the hat. And so we're hopeful that, you know, we're actually going to be creating opportunity, greater opportunity for folks who have the lived experience and the certification to come forward in this new exciting venture. So more to come.
Great. And that's, I mean, that's it. Those are my questions. And Deandre, you mentioned this serving as a model. And yeah, there's that deep need downtown, but there's a deep need throughout the county and throughout the country for this kind of approach. So just thinking about, just visioning how it can be built out throughout the county and how we can build on it inclusively. And so thank you all again for a wonderful presentation, all of your and your team's work on this.
Thank you all. I know you've been working really hard on this. Appreciate all of you. And I also want to give a shout out to Liam Frost and Adam Brennan in my office, who've been so helpful on this, in this project. And to all of our construction team too. It's really nice to have all of you here talking about the program side of things and not just hearing about the construction update is important, but it's also great to hear from you about the program because we know that that is actually the reason we're building it. So thank you again for coming this morning. And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item.
R3, Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month Proclamation.
So moved. Second.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Vega Peterson moves. Commissioner Jappal seconds approval of R3.
All right. I will start off. Thank you so much, Chair. And we've got some folks who are joining us today. So I want to make sure they're able to get their cameras on to join us. But I am very excited to have this chance to bring forward the proclamation today. We're celebrating today and actually the whole month, the contributions of the Latinx people in Multnomah County and declaring September 15th through October 15th, Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. You know, as a Latina, it's been my honor and privilege to be able to bring forward this proclamation every year that I've served on the board. I always look forward to celebrating the ways our Latinx community brings innovation and vibrancy to our county. I know last year when we were doing it, we're like, next year we will be together in person. And unfortunately, we are still not together in person for the proclamation, but I have hopes for next year that we will be able to do that and celebrate together as we've done in the past with music and food and all of the good things that we love so much. And this, this year, really the theme of this proclamation is about the resilience in the Latinx community and how that, that is really generationed by. and how that, that is really generationed by our wellspring of hope and togetherness. In the face of significant hardship, Latinx residents in Multnomah County have intensified their dedication to helping each other and the broader community prosper. And I really want to start off by recognizing the work that has gone into fighting for and, and protecting and advocating for the Latinx people, especially those who are working in the frontline industries, the dire impacts of COVID-19. The efforts include providing accessible vaccines, distributing PPE, securing rights for workers and making sure that the messages that are going out, the information that's being shared is being done so in a way that's, that's right for our community and in partnership with our community. And I, you know, there's been a lot of organizations that have been a part of that work, such as IRCO and Latino Network and Programa Hispano. And of course, Multnomah County's Health Department continues to host culturally specific clinics for Latinx people where no one is turned away from getting the life-saving vaccine that our communities needs, regardless of documentation status or language spoken. Latinx have been essential in our fight against COVID-19 and have been essential in making sure that our community receives the protection that it needs, especially for as a population that's at a higher risk of being infected. I think among the many things that we've learned from the last year and a half is that our society is indebted to the work of our teachers, our childcare providers and our farmworkers. And yet they're continually denied the rights and dignity that they deserve. That's why I was so proud that Multnomah County residents voted to give preschool for all teachers and teachers assistants a living wage. Our preschool and childcare industry is disproportionately staffed by Latinx women and the recognition of their important work is long overdue. And we also saw this past year that the Oregon Legislature pushed to protect and recognize the value of our farmworkers, which is another industry dominated by Latinx workers. I was proud to, to provide support to House Bill 2358, which sought to set restrictions on the condition of agriculture labor and provide workers for the first time with overtime pay. And, you know, this comes in the midst of wildfires and heatwaves, which has caused devastating conditions for our, our outdoor laborers and which we know resulted in the tragic death of Sebastian Francisco Perez this last year. So I will continue to push for protections and fair labor conditions for our farmworkers. And I know that the people on this call are going to be there with, with that fight too. Despite the hardships of the last year, our community has stepped up and will continue to do so. Perhaps because of some of the hardship, we've seen a historic number of Latinos, Latinas and Latinas across Oregon run for elected office, be appointed to leadership positions and lead advocacy efforts. And I will have to say, some of the people that I look up to the most in our Latinx community and who have fought beside and with for years are here with us today to talk about the work that they do. So please join me in welcoming Tony DeFalcio, Reyna Lopez and Victoria Lara. Tony DeFalcio serves as the Executive Director of Latino Network, an organization that advocates for the self-determination of Latinx youth, families and community members and serves them widely through culturally specific programming. Prior to Latino Network, Tony was the Executive Director of Verde. And Tony has a national role in environmental justice and has led that work for years at Verde before moving to Latino Network. I have always been so proud to, to know Tony and valued his friendship. But I have to say, especially this past year and seeing the way that he stood up and, and rallied people to advocate at the state level and advocate the governor's office to stand up for the needs of our Latinx community during the COVID crisis was incredible. We also have Reyna Lopez, join us. Reyna is the Executive Director of Pecun, which advocates for the rights of farmworkers and their families across the state of Oregon. Reyna is an absolute force of nature in the state of Oregon and she has done more since the time that I've been, you know, working in either state legislature or at the county in demanding statewide accountability and action to protect our farmworkers. And I'm just so proud that she's here today. And then finally, Victoria Lara. Victoria is the founder and CEO of Lara Media, which is the only Latina-owned marketing agency in the Pacific Northwest. And Lara Media has had a huge role this past year in helping government agencies and organizations create culturally responsive tools to market and communicate with the Latinx and underrepresented communities. Victoria is also the engine behind El Grito, which is a celebration that we will be having next week. That really celebrates Mexican Independence Day and is a way for our community to come together and celebrate. So I want to thank them all for being here and especially for the work and advocacy that you do. I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Tony because he looks like he's all set to go.
Thank you, Jessica. Good to see you all. It's always an honor and a privilege to be in front of this wonderful commission. And my name is Tony DeFalcio. I currently serve as the Executive Director at Latino Network. I use he/him el pronouns. And I just wanted to share a few thoughts about where the Latinx community is today. And when I was asked to kind of share where we're at and where we need to go, it really was a good opportunity for me to reflect a little bit because, you know, we are struggling. I mean, there's no doubt about it. Between COVID, the threat of evictions, unemployment benefits running out, the impacts of climate change that are really hitting our communities first and worst. It's undoubtedly true that these cumulative impacts are, you know, really combining with this economic system that stubbornly refuses to include us in meaningful ways so that we can build intergenerational wealth. You know, the constancy of low wages, long hours, being on the front end of climate and economic disaster is not just worrying and exhausting and things that we can be resilient to, but it is increasingly deadly for our communities. And we're seeing that. And you heard, I'm glad, Jessica, you referenced the loss of Sebastián because I think it epitomizes in some way how deadly this pandemic and economic recession and other forces are hitting our communities. And at the same time, the wealthiest and the whitest among us are reaping record profits and seeing incomes skyrocket. And so, you know, the good news to me is, is that we together, the county and our Latinx communities are not small. We're 14% of the population. You saw the rapid growth in the census and that together we are mighty. And we have done and will continue to do incredible things. We've created universal pre-K in the county. Thank you for the leadership. We've led together an equity-centered pandemic response. Thank you for your leadership together with us. And together we've made deep investments in community-led efforts and cycles of poverty and violence. Together we must be the progressive and ever more radical in the work we are doing though. You know, I've seen some of these recent calls from the center and the right to move faster and invest in flash in the pan solutions. And we don't need to invest in flash in the pan solutions. We need to focus our energies on more progressive and more radical efforts because our communities aren't just on fire right now. They're actually, the buildings are burning down. The buildings are, you know, going away right in front of us. And so what I think we need are several things in reforming the very way we do our work. So first of all, we must lead the way in reforming our state's flawed revenue structure and mechanisms to create abundant resources for the Latinx communities to get out of dead-end jobs, to have abundant and plentiful healthcare options, both mental and physical healthcare. One of the things that we're seeing most in our community right now is the need for expanded access to mental healthcare. And so I was really excited to hear some of the presentation ahead of us. And I'm really excited at some of the leadership in the county right now. And I'm urging us to go further and to go much deeper in terms of creating those resources. We need to have that kind of abundant, bicultural, bilingual, culturally competent, mental health for youth and families in our communities. Youth violence is something that we're seeing in our community right now. And we need to have guaranteed summer jobs for all Latinx and youth of color. It's a tall order, but it's one I know we've talked about in the past and we have wonderful programs that start to address this. But we need to do much more and have much broader efforts in this area. Third is we need to invest in ourselves. So living wages for community partners and doing the good work together with the county. We all know and agree this is a challenge for us and we're all committed to the solution. And I look forward to being a constructive partner with you all and addressing it. We need to end violence against women in our community and women, non-binary folks and LGBTQ folks. Fully 40% of women Latinx community have experienced sexual assault. And this is not just a sobering fact, it's an ongoing fact. And so reinvesting in, increasing investment in domestic violence, violence against LGBTQ folks and non-binary folks is really critical. And last, we need to address the climate crisis in specific ways that really creates more investments for communities of color and the Latinx community. We've done a great job in Portland with Portland Clean Energy Fund and you've seen how successful that is in creating the kind of abundant resource now that goes directly to community-led organizations to, to address the climate impacts in ways that are authentic to and address most directly the needs of communities of color. So we need to address building emissions and address some of our big corporate friends like Amazon in East County, who have not made significant investments in our communities, but rely heavily on our labor and rely heavily on our infrastructure. And those kinds of investments and ratcheting down emissions from buildings and simultaneously creating resources from that can put into place lifesaving heating, cooling and weatherization into renters, mobile homes and homes in our communities. I really want to just appreciate you, Commissioner Vega Peterson, for your leadership in our community. And I want to appreciate the leadership of all of you at the commission. And just to exhort you, let's continue to go left and progressive and more radical. And let's not go toward the center and faster flash in the pan solutions. Let's go with deeper, more radical solutions that our communities need. The answers are here in our community. We're ready to go and help. Let's work together to create those bigger investments that can help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony. Now we're going to go ahead and hear from Reyna Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Chair Cifori, County Commissioners. My name is Reyna Lopez. I'm the Executive Director of Pecun, Oregon's Farmworker Union. I'm also the president of the Pineros y Campesinos Unidos del Noroeste. Also, it's, it's our core farmworker union where it all really started at Pecun. And I want to say a very special thank you to Commissioner Vega Peterson for bringing this proclamation and ensuring that Latinx, Latina, Latino, Latin, BIPOC communities are seen and acknowledged in this boardroom as well as your fierce leadership for the people of Multnomah County. Today we celebrate Latinx Heritage Month. And it's, it's a really, my deepest gratitude to you and the members of the commission for proclaiming Latinx Heritage Month. Pecun started back in 1985, almost 35 years ago, by 80 indigenous Mexican farmworkers with the help of Caesar and Dolores. And that was with the Sis se puede spirit, with the legacy and the struggle to really have and fight for the right to unionize. And unfortunately, that exclusion continues today. I myself, I'm a daughter of immigrants that came to Oregon following the migration of farmwork North. I like to start my story with my parents who left Mexico to come to Oregon looking for a better life. And as a kid, I myself was a farmworker. I picked blueberries, marionberries, cherries. I picked worms and all of that had a major impact on my worldview and frankly, my life's purpose. Farmworkers are essential before and after the pandemic and they should be treated as essential. And time and time again, I hear the testimonies of my people, of agricultural workers who feel forgotten. They feel essential, but yet disposable. And I'll tell you why. Because as you heard, a vast majority, about 90%, I'm not saying that everybody, we do have some farmworkers as well that are AAPI, Pacific Islander. But a big percentage of them, about 90% of farmworkers are Latinx descent, many of them speaking indigenous languages from Mexico and Central America. The median life expectancy of a migrant farmworker is still 49 years of age. And because throughout the pandemic, we have seen that our COVID rates are significantly higher than the general population, between 30 and 40% in some counties, up to 50%. And this is despite being only 14% of, not only, I guess now we went up a little bit, but percent of Oregon's population. And because undocumented workers have not been acknowledged as the backbone of our essential workforce. And because agricultural workers are being asked to do some of the most dangerous work in the, in the state, in the country, without that being reflected in our pay, including Southern Oregon farmworkers from Talent in Phoenix, who during the wildfire, the Labor Day wildfires last year, lost their entire homes. And because of mixed immigration status, still today are living in limbo. And the lack of PPE during that time, not only for farmworkers in Southern Oregon, but here in our own county, was really lacking in the time that we needed it the most. And because today still, workers are being assigned labor housing with dozens of other workers making social distancing completely impossible, despite the fact that we are still in this pandemic and making those conditions even more deadly. And because across the state, farmworkers are dying to put food on the table. People like 60-year-old agricultural worker Jose Guadalupe Olivera Mendoza, who went home ill last March and died on Monday, the Monday after, when he was put on a hospital ventilator. And, and really it was the last time that we were able to see him. Or even my old soccer mate's father, who worked at the same processing plant as my mother and was part of the early outbreaks that were happening during COVID. And also because we're celebrating the contributions of Latinx people, but we also must not forget the contributions of the farmworker and the farmworker movement in Oregon. Farmworkers still have not gained many of the rights that many of us take for granted, including farmworker overtime, as you heard, and collective bargaining rights. While today we acknowledge the contributions of Latinx communities in our state and I am so proud of our resilience, our culture, our, everything that we bring to the state, we still have a long way to go to achieve justice. And today I want to offer you some insight as commissioners on how you can support us. As you heard, the Oregon Legislature debated whether to require growers to pay farmworkers overtime pay. And it's something that most other workers have and we, we don't have that for hand harvest workers here in Oregon. House Bill 2358 would have guaranteed overtime pay for both piece rate and hourly farmworkers. And I'd first like to start by pointing out that this exclusion actually stems from a very long legacy of racism. It actually started with the Fair Labor Standards Act in 1938 as a part of a shameful legacy of racism that initially targeted a workforce back in the 30s that was a majority Southern Black and African-American farmworkers. And today, most of those workers are BIPOC Latinx folks. And excluding farmworkers from overtime was wrong then and it's still wrong today. Farmworkers are not second-class workers. They do not belong to a lower class of workers in Oregon or the nation. And many workers in Oregon are already afforded overtime pay. And this is why farmworkers should be, if you're calling us essential, we should also have those, those, those basic protections as well. During peak harvest, farmworkers work from sunrise to sunset and spend very little time with their families. And in many cases, children of farmworkers are also raised by babysitters or older siblings. I was one of those older siblings that spent a lot of time with my little sister. And we understand that these circumstances have a big impact on farmworker families as it would in any other family where kids rarely get to spend time with their parents. And overtime laws, things like the preschool for all, all of these important progressive policies are really going to help our families and make sure that we have good supportive quality of life for our communities. And also I'll just close out by saying that to honor Latinx and immigrant farmworkers across Oregon today, I do ask you all to support expanding farmworker rights, including the right to unionize, the right to collectively bargain and have a fair, fair contract at your workplace. Shout out to the Navisco workers that are on the front lines today, improving and expanding labor and housing conditions and taking an intersectional approach to policymaking by centering race, class, gender, especially for the most pertinent issues of our time. And it's up to you, it's up to all of us to meet that moment. Thank you so much for your time today. Y la lucha sigue. Sis se puede.
Sis se puede. Thank you, Reyna. And we will finally hear from Victoria Lara, who will close this out today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Cofory. Thank you, Jessica Vega, for the invitation. And thank you, everyone, for all the commissioners to be here. Also, thank you to Reyna and Toni. They are amazing leaders. And it's a privilege for me to share this opportunity with you, Reyna and Toni also, and Jessica. Thank you for your leadership. I'm just going to start inviting you to the event next week, Wednesday, the 15th. Latino Network is our fiscal agent. And also, you probably know that Monoma County will be there offering COVID vaccination for our communities, for our community. And OHA will be there also offering flu vaccination and testing for COVID. A lot of people have asked me, why you haven't canceled the event? And even the Mexican consulate called me last week and said, Victoria, we should cancel the event. And I say no, because if one family goes and get vaccinated or one family goes and get the resources from free immigration attorneys or how to buy a house, that will be worth it. All the planning and all the work my team has done and this event that we have done and the support of Monoma County, OHA, among other sponsors will be worth it. Because as Reyna and Toni say, we have experienced the longest loss of year expectancy. The Latinx community have lost 3.4 years of expectancy in their life with COVID against whites, the only loss one year. We have affected, our business have been affected. You have seen a lot of businesses close, but a lot of our Latino businesses have been closed because of COVID or struggling right now. All the vendors, they will be there, all the ones, they will have food. They are all women-owned Latinas. They are all immigrants. I'm an immigrant myself. I came to the United States without documents, without speaking English, and without any money. That's the way we come to this country, with a dream. And yeah, a lot of fears, but I always say our dreams are bigger than our fears. And 20 years ago, and I, more than 20 years ago, and I opened the communication firm because I realized that there was a need to develop these messages. And now we're developing messages in 34 languages. For those 16 languages are indigenous languages, especially to farmworkers in other rural areas. But we want to invite you to El Grito because it is so important for us to share with our kids. You know, the median age, the most common age for the Latino community in Monoma County is 12 years old. When you check with the Caucasian community, the whites is 56 years old. We are not just growing, we are also a very young community. And we are here to stay and to put what we have, our soul, our work, to make this county flourish. And that is why it's so important for us to celebrate. And I know it's COVID, we're going to have, it's outside, we're going to implement the mask Monday. We have a lot of masks. We will be very careful in how we situate the boots and everything. But I have seen and experienced how our Latinx families go to this event and they feel so proud with their identity. They feel so proud to share it with their kids. They feel surprised, say, at least this day, these hours, I can be very proud to be Latino here in the middle of this city that is very white. And maybe there's all, a lot of days that we experience racism and we experience that we need to hide who we are, but that day, they feel so proud to be who they are and to sing and to be a mom community. And we have to earn this event, not just to be a celebration, but also a resource fair. What I know, a lady told me last year, you know, thank you because mi viejo, my husband, is the only time he gets checked for diabetes and pressure and a lot of things. A lot of our communities don't have health insurance. A lot of our families, or if they have it, they still don't use it. They feel more comfortable and well, we hope to go and get vaccinated. And we hope you go there or you invite others to be there because they can enjoy that. And also, I will say that I'm very happy and thankful with Jessica Vega, Commissioner Jessica Vega, too. She's my friend. I forgot to say Commissioner, but Jessica. But that she proclamation is putting the Latinx community here with this celebration because it's not just independence of Mexico, it's independence on other A-Latin American countries. That's why the Hispanic Celebration Month. And we really want you to know that. Lada Media, as I told you, started 20 years ago and we just want to serve our community. We want to provide what the community needs and be there for them. And I invite you to continue supporting small businesses for the Latino, Latinas, for immigrants. And even if you cannot be there, you can go and buy some food. But we are struggling. Latino businesses are struggling. And Latino businesses are the heart of the community. You know, we not only offer employees to other communities of color, we also offer opportunities. And we just need the support of the Monoma County to continue being there. And hopefully, you guys can be there and support this event. Thank you.
Sorry, I was having a trial finding my mute, unmute button. You'd think after all this time, I'd know exactly where it is. Thank you so much, all of you, for coming this morning. Thank you, Commissioner Vega Peterson, for sponsoring this proclamation this morning. And I know that you've given us a lot of food for thought this morning. And I know that the commissioners have questions and comments for you as well as just on the topic and the proclamation itself. So we'll start with Commissioner Myron.
Thank you so much. And thank you so much, Commissioner Vega Peterson, for sponsoring this proclamation and just all that you do pretty much constantly in your work on behalf of our Latinx community. It's just inspiring and so meaningful and deeply appreciate you. The, this was, I share, I share the sadness that Commissioner Vega Peterson expressed in that we are not together in person today. You know, it's just, it is sad, sadder and sadder. But also, we are together in spirit. And, you know, I think the theme of this proclamation really speaks to that. And all of what each of you shared, Toni and Reyna and Victoria, speaks to that hope and forward thinking and forward movement and resilience that we are continuing, you know, is, we can continue to enact, embody, and empower through our proclamation, through our actions and through our policies. Toni, what I really appreciated, you're talking about taking that that step back to take time to reflect when there is so much intensity and truly devastation going on in our communities right now. It's like, I feel like we're constantly on the treadmill and, you know, what new thing is being thrown at us? How can we possibly have time to take that step back? But it's so important. And I really appreciate the proactive steps you've identified, like actions that we can take that can move us forward. And, you know, I really appreciated everything you said. I would really hone in on that need for, as you said, abundant mental health care, physical health care, obviously, but also that mental health care, particularly that is bilingual, that is culturally specific and particularly when it comes to our youth. That is so tremendously important right now. That is at the core of the work we do at the county. And that is something that I anticipate we'll be able to elevate and move forward. So thank you for highlighting that. And the idea of living wages for all partners we work with at the county and for all people who are working in our community, frankly. Reyna, I just, I appreciate all that you're do, all that you do and how you elevated so many issues here today. I appreciate your mentioning historically, the history with Cesar Chavez and his work to achieve justice through the labor movement. And mentioning that, you know, the timing of that and how long ago it seems. And yet, the exclusions and exploitation and inequities that exist today. I actually was at the Nabisco, the Mandela's Picket Line on Labor Day, which was quite powerful. And I spoke with many frontline workers who described conditions that are essentially like the sweatshop conditions we used, I used to read about, you know, in elementary school and high school. And that exists today. There is so much we can and must do to push this forward, including in terms of the right to unionize for agricultural workers and so many of the supports that we can offer them. I know there are many who live in my district in the west aspect, the western part of Monoma County, and supporting them and their families. And then Victoria, you know, you started out with the real, just the gravity and intensity of, you know, the human toll of what we have all been experiencing, but particularly disproportionately the Latinx community over this past, you know, year and a half with the pandemic, with the life expectancy, the loss of life, the loss of business. You know, the impact on our family, on the Latinx families. And the thing that I really loved about what you did is how you turned that around and spoke of the hope and resilience and the actions we can take. All of this was such a call to action. And I loved, I wrote it down where you, your phrase that our dreams are bigger than our fears. And I just, I love that. And I think I'll end by just restating that, your comment. Our dreams are bigger than our fears. Thanks to all of you for all that you do every single day, for the people that you are representing here today and for being here and helping us celebrate this proclamation together in spirit.
Commissioner Jappel.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, everybody. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Vega Peterson, for bringing this proclamation forward and for your leadership in our Latinx community and also in our community at large. Thank you so much, Toni, Reyna, and Victoria for being here today. I, there's so much to appreciate here. I guess I'll start by saying that this proclamation does seem, and the theme, does seem particularly appropriate for the moment in time in which we find ourselves with the Latinx community so disproportionately impacted by the COVID pandemic. Everything that has taken a toll on community members and always, and always continued the resilience and the contributions to our community. So if it does feel particularly meaningful this year, and I am like all my colleagues, I'm so sorry, we can't celebrate in person and eat and share music and, you know, space together. I want to just really, really appreciate the call to action that each of you has issued. You know, we do, we do these proclamations and I think they're incredibly meaningful in terms of providing our communities, our diverse communities with, hopefully, a feeling of being seen and being appreciated and the sense that we at Monoma County are here for all of our communities. And I think they should all include a call for action because celebration and recognition isn't enough. Moving the needle on the conditions and the experiences that our communities have here, that has to be the ultimate goal of the proclamations and of the work. So I really, really appreciate the fact that each of you did that. It's hard to pull out particular ones that resonate because they all resonated. But I will, I will start with a few, you know, Toni. And I'm pulling these out in part because they include areas in which I am working. Climate crisis always and forever and above so many other things because it impacts our future generations in such profound ways. Really appreciate your calling out violence against women and the need to specifically tackle that in our communities of color and our Latinx community. Living wages always. Youth violence, I think many of you know that we've got youth employment programs here at Monoma County. And I absolutely agree that those are a key strategy for ending youth involvement and risk of violence. And then Toni, reforming the revenue structure. You know, I so appreciate your calling that out. Without the revenue, we can't do the things that we need to do. I have been working on property tax reform, would love to talk more to you about that. I see Commissioner Vega Peterson grinning because she knows I never lose an opportunity to talk about property tax reform, but it really is vital. And then I'll also call out, I know you are, you are working on this. I am so excited about the Colley, Community-led Colley Tiff District and process. I think that's going to be an incredible source of revenue and boost for preventing displacement, for building community, and for really creating thriving community in the Colley neighborhood and for Latinx community there. Reyna, you are inspiring. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing. For, you know, you're focusing on farmworkers, but the work that you're doing creates a platform for all, for our entire community. And I was really glad and appreciative to be able to work with you a little bit on supporting HB 2358 because absolutely, we need those protections. And I will just, the failure to provide therapy and benefits and conditions for farmworkers is a national disgrace. And I, you know, so appreciate the work you're doing to ameliorate that. And then Victoria, I'm going to repeat some things my colleague Commissioner Myron said just because, because there are the things to be said. Your work in amplifying the voices of our Latinx community members, I think, is just absolutely invaluable. I will be at El Grito. It sounds wonderful and I can't wait to participate. And I too have to kind of close by quoting some of the things that you said. Our dreams are bigger than our fears. Absolutely wonderful and inspiring. And then we are here to stay to help our country flourish. As a fellow immigrant, we are here to stay and we help our country flourish. So thank you for exemplifying that the way that you do. Thank you all so much for being here.
Commissioner Vega Peterson, do you have comments or do you want to wait till we read the proclamation?
I'll wait. Thank you.
Commissioner Stigman?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much, Commissioner Vega Peterson, for bringing this important proclamation. As an immigrant, I can understand the challenges that far too many of us that we're faced with. And Toni, it was great to have you here, really excited about the Plaza Esperanza that's going to be out here in East County, looking forward to that expansion. And you are absolutely right, we are leaving far too many people behind without the opportunity to have access to family wage jobs. And then, you know, the jobs that they do have access to, like it's insanity that we're not paying people overtime for their work. I believe that if, you know, the workers that we have that are in our food systems, we, those are so important to our economy and our family. And our food system would collapse without those frontline workers. So I stand with everyone on the right to unionize and to have collective bargaining and with the Nabisco workers as well. So we know what the right thing is to do, but we've got to take action to make sure it occurs. And with great leaders, you know, like Reyna and Victoria, you know, and Toni and Commissioner Vega Peterson, we can get this work across the finish line. It's always a pleasure to work with each of you. I know that we've worked together on the census work and I'm really excited. Victoria, I appreciate what you said about El Grito, that if you vaccinate one family, one person, it will all be worth it. So thank you so much. I will, I will be there to support you all. And thank you just for supporting our community and thank you for your continued leadership.
I will quickly add my thanks and my appreciation to all of you. Again, to Commissioner Vega Peterson for
Again, to Commissioner Vega Peterson for bringing this forward. And I just know that for so many in the Latinx community, the challenges that we've faced this past year in particular have felt especially steep and even insurmountable. And while we, we often say that COVID has affected everyone, we know that not everyone has been affected in the same ways. And that's been especially true for so many Latinx community members, our friends and our neighbors and our colleagues, our partners, whose experiences with this pandemic, in this pandemic, have been shaped by our countries and frankly, even our own communities' history, as we've heard today, of policies and practices that are steeped in systemic racism and discrimination. But what's also been extremely clear throughout this, this season has been that this has been the strength, the unity and the leadership within Latinx community. Early on in the pandemic, Latinx community advocated strongly for resources and action that they knew that their community would need as the impacts of the shutdowns and illness began to spread. And there is no doubt that the voices of you all on this call and so many more in our community pushed everyone to do more. And we will continue, like Commissioner Jai Paul said, to move the needle on the experiences of the Latinx community in real and tangible ways. So like every year, but especially this year, I cherish this chance to express our collective gratitude and pride in the Latinx communities and commit to moving forward together. Commissioner Vega Peterson, would you please read the proclamation?
I would be glad to. And the only thing I will say is I am not surprised at all that our panelists took this opportunity to speak some truth to power and ask something. I think that's one of the hallmarks of our community is like when you've got the opportunity, you gotta grab it because it may not come, it come that, that often. So I really appreciate that. And, you know, and last summer, my, we were supposed to have this giant, like Vega family reunion to celebrate the 100th year of us coming to this country when our, when my great, great grandmother and grandfather came to this country. And we weren't able to do that because of COVID. But, you know, when talking about that, that celebration, it was going to be, you know, it was really about our resilience of being able to stay here as we came through to get jobs in the farms, to get jobs in the steel mills. And then we were able to stay and be resilient in the light of, you know, repatriation and other movements of trying to push us out of this country. And so that's something that I hold very proudly. And I think the resilience and the community that we have today is all of a part of that. So with that, I will read the proclamation proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month in Monoma County, Oregon. The Monoma County Board of Commissioners finds, Monoma County has been home to people who identify as Hispanic, Latino, Latinx, Chicano or Indigenous from Mexico, Central or South America for over 100 years. In the 1920 census, 37 Mexicans were listed as living in Monoma County. Members of the Latinx community in Monoma County include people whose families who have been here for generations and some who are the newest members of our community. Recent census data shows that people of Hispanic origin, origin are among the fastest growing populations in Oregon and are estimated to make up to close to 13% of Monoma County's population. Latinx residents in Monoma County contribute to our culture and arts as singers, performers and writers. They help drive our small business economy as workers, business owners and entrepreneurs. They enrich our academic environment as teachers, professors and engineers. They are driving social and political change as advocates, activists and elected officials. They ensure our health and community as nurses, doctors, caretakers and childcare workers. Many jobs and professions that are classified as frontline workers during the COVID-19 pandemic contain workforces with large numbers of Latinx people, including but not limited to medical professions, teachers, grocery store workers, farm workers and other jobs that are critical to a functioning society. In these last 18 months, our broader community has been held up by the contributions of Latinx essential workers. The COVID-19 pandemic has disproportionately affected the Latinx community in Monoma County. Latinx residents comprise 13% of Monoma County's population but have accounted for 20% of COVID-19 cases. Additionally, only 46.5% of eligible Latinx individuals are vaccinated, making it the least vaccinated group in Monoma County compared to other races and ethnicities. Monoma County, community-based organizations and culturally specific health clinics are working tirelessly, tirelessly to reach this underserved and at-risk population. Efforts to making the COVID-19 vaccine more accessible, for example, translating materials into Spanish, providing incentives to cover the cost of transportation or childcare and setting up vaccine clinics in areas of Portland where under-vaccinated populations live, are all helping to increase the rates of vaccinations among Latinx people. Latinx employees make up 10% of Monoma County's workforce. The approximately 500 Latinx county employees allow us to better serve our community by bringing multilingual and multicultural capacity to our workforce. Monoma County takes great pride in the growing diversity of our community and in the impressive and valuable contributions made by our Latinx residents to the county's growth, prosperity and wellbeing. Latinx Heritage Month celebrates and recognizes the contributions of the Latinx communities in the United States have made to society and culture. This month, we honor the rich heritage of Latinx communities and celebrate their countless achievements. The Monoma County Board of Commissioners proclaims September 15th through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month in Monoma County, Oregon, in recognition and celebration of the many contributions of Latinx residents to the county and our community. We call upon all residents of Monoma County to celebrate the history and recognize the contributions of Latinx residents to our community, state and nation.
Marina, would you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Jai Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Kefory?
Aye. The proclamation is adopted. Thank you all again for coming. And unfortunately, no party. We'll just celebrate here in our own homes. All right, well, that concludes our agenda items for the day. We do have time now for commissioners to talk about any non-agenda items that they might have. Thank you, Toni. Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegman, anything to share?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Wanted to remind folks that we will be having our monthly issue forum next Thursday, September 16th at 3:00 PM. And we've invited DA Schmidt to talk about some of his initiatives and review of his work in this past year. And we'll have a Q and A session. So we will have something up on my Facebook page and my website. So if you can join us, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Um, the only thing I had to say is I wanted to let people know that Welcoming Week is going to be starting this week, which is about welcoming immigrants and refugees to our country and, in our city. And there are gonna be activities, including a welcoming ceremony tomorrow evening at Gateway Discovery Park at 5 o'clock. And I encourage people to attend and celebrate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jai Paul?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, also just wanted to mention Welcoming Week. I will be speaking at the opening ceremony, 6:00 PM at Gateway. And I guess also just say that it seems particularly appropriate that we're starting the celebration this year because we are and the country is expecting an influx of Afghan refugees. And so creating that welcoming environment for those folks and all other refugees and immigrants continues to seem incredibly important. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Myron?
Thank you. I was gonna mention Welcoming Week, but that clearly has been done. And, and also, I know Commissioner Jai Paul had encouraged this, I believe, last week or the week before. But I would just encourage, if you, for those who haven't been out there yet, to go stand on the picket line with the workers at Nabisco. It is incredible to hear people's stories and experiences. I mean, everyone I spoke with had been there for literally for decades, working there. And, and now what they're experiencing is, you know, just, just true exploitation. And so it's, it's really great to show your support and also get to talk to people there. So I'm gonna encourage people to do that. And I think that's it. Thank you. Oh, actually, one thing. It is, I apologize, this board briefing, it was Rosh Hashanah, which is the Jewish New Year. Next week's board meeting is on Yom Kippur, which is the, Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur are the two most solemn sort of holy days in the Jewish tradition. And so I will not be at the board meeting on Thursday. But this is a real time of, of reflection and consideration and thinking about the past year and looking toward making atonement for one's own personal, you know, transgressions or, you know, and also looking more broadly at our place in the world and moving towards Tikun Olam, which is Hebrew for healing the world. And so I think that's the work we truly do every day here at Monoma County. And it just, it's really speaking to me particularly this year. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you all for coming. That is, concludes our board meeting for today. We will see you next week, Thursday, September 16th. Right back here, same channel. See you later and with that, we're adjourned.